Welcome to the City Council Meeting for the City of Bella Vista on Monday, December 17th. Will you rise please and join in quickly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
We'll do the roll call of council. Councilmember Lloyd.
Here.
Flynn.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Wozniak.
Here.
All present. Thank you. Before we go to citizen input, I just want to let you know that at the end of the session this evening, I will be presenting to you an update on the Trafalgar Road fire. First is Amber going. Oh yes, I should mention that the time limit is three minutes, I think everyone knows this, and the total time is 30 minutes.
I try not to take up that much time. Thank you all for being here and hearing us out today. So today, it's been 142 days today since this fire began. 142 days of no solutions, 142 days of no leadership, 142 days of what feels like we have been left in the dark without any answers that have been given to us. 142 days that I have not felt safe in my home, and 142 days that I have not felt safe allowing my children to go outside and play. 142 days that I can't get back experiences this holiday season. And 142 days that I continuously worry about the long-term exposure that this has on my 142 days with no answers, and 141 nights of no rest, just worried that while my children sleep there, slowly being poisoned, or we don't know because there's no answers. I want to know why I should trust every one of you on this board. And I know that we're doing what we can, but it's not enough because we suffer, and it's night after night after night. And now that we have these sensors, we see what we're breathing in, and we still do not have answers, and we still have to watch our children sleep and not know what they're being exposed to. I spoke with Mr. McGowan at the Benton County Emergency Management, and he told me that that was not true, that he has never been contacted by the city, and wrote me a letter that I have, that he has not once been contacted by the City of Bella Vista with any help. More answers, not answering. I'm not going to take up time because there are a lot of people here that have a lot to say, but I will say this. All of our lives, all of our children's lives right now are dependent upon each and every one of you. Whether or not you feel that it is solely your responsibility, we are still looking to you for answers. We will, this is for everyone out here, we will have another community meeting on January the 18th at Riordan Hall at 6:00 PM. I really hope that you can all attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amber, you also had a lawsuit.
My son's going to speak.
Sure.
The reason I wanted to talk is because it's been doing environmental health problems to many people, and I want that to stop. So, I have a few things that I know it's been doing to our health. It has been giving us fevers, sore throat, and bad cough, and lots more. If I make a lot of people sick, I wanted to go out. Everyone wanted to go out. I want to go out.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Chris Nelson. The purpose of me speaking tonight is to plead to this city council on behalf of my family and my community. However, I honestly believe that this city council will continue to move forward with other economic priorities versus what I feel to be the number one priority, and that's our safety and our health. Usually I try to keep my head down and focus on my family, my career, and accept what life gives me. I'm an Army veteran, and one thing the Army teaches you is to adapt and overcome. As a non-commissioned officer, I used to tell my soldiers, if you have a problem and you bring it to me, make sure you bring it with a proposed solution. Anything else is just whining. A few years ago, the Rago section of the trail was scheduled to be installed, and I met with you, Mr. Mayor, and some other city officials, and proposed an alternate plan to route it a little bit further away from my backyard, but that request went unanswered. A few months later, I came home to see the bench being installed next to my house, about 15 feet from my property line. I once again met with city planners and provided another reasonable proposal to move to the corner of the road so that the kids that catch a bus could also use it. That reasonable request also was not considered. At this time, I realized that this city really doesn't care about our concerns, only what you guys plan. Now we have a burning landfill spewing toxic chemicals into our air. Only four months, almost four months, residents have been calling with health concerns, and again, their requests for assistance went unanswered. We've been told there's no danger, we've been told there's nothing we can do about this, we've been told that our children are fine if they play outside. We've had people in this community also insinuate that we're crazy or whining. This weekend was the worst. I have never seen a situation this bad, to the point where my skin was burning as I rushed over to a neighbor's house to give him an N95 mask, because when I called 911, I was told to leave a message for your fire chief. As of lately, most of my neighbors are fearful that they won't wake up in the morning. I'm fearful that my son, who's four years old, is going to have cancer by the time he's 20, and not one person from your administration has reached out to us. We've been unfairly treated by others in this community who deny the hell we're living in over in the Harrington subdivision. I have to sit around and not watch only my son and my wife's health decline for my neighbors who are thrown to love through this tragedy. The optics of this make us question your priorities, and I'm sure you guys are catching a lot of crap now right now and feel that the personal attacks on your character are inappropriate, but it's not the residents who made this personal, it's the failure of this city that made it personal when they failed to protect us. This issue should have been escalated months ago. The fact that you have imposed warnings on the trail ahead for the parts further demonstrates your lack of concern for communities' safety.
Can you wind it up, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I'm winding it up. I encourage you to stop all your projects and shift all available funds and resources to mitigating this problem, because it is a public safety crisis. We're escalating to somebody who's more capable of handling this situation. Thank you.
Dylan Jax, 23, Hubbard Lane. Some people might not know, but this is Mr. Frank Anderson's last city council meeting, and Frank was the first mayor of Bella Vista and pretty much started the city up, so I just want to recognize Mr. Frank Anderson and I. Thank you, Frank, for all you've done for the city and the POA crew of state before you served as the mayor and city council member. Thank you, Frank.
Just wanted to actually kind of equate this issue that we're having with the stump dump fire to other issues that have been kind of similar, but maybe actually similar, but other ecological disasters that we have around the country. First, I want to talk about the Flint, Michigan water crisis that's been going on since 2014. All these considered relatively minor issue, you know, concern to air quality, easier to remediate water issue with filtration and things like that versus something that's actually a legitimate air quality issue that's been going on since 2014 without remediation over there, granted we're not Flint, Michigan, but nonetheless, I just wanted to mention that it's been going on for four years. We talk a lot of times about home value prices in Bella Vista. I want to let you know that since the crisis began in Flint, Michigan, the average cost for a home in the affected area is only $14,000. So people talk about home values all the time, I want to let you guys know that home values will plummet due to this issue. I want to talk about another place called Centrilia, Pennsylvania, which also actually suffers from an underground fire. It's been burning since 1962. It originally started out as a trash fire, and then ignited a coal mine, which obviously we don't have coal mines here, but nonetheless, it was still an underground fire that's been burning since 1960s. The original population of Centrilia, Pennsylvania was 1,400 people, there's now less than 10 people that live in that area. People call that place a wasteland, Mary does ghost town, these are just some of the terms that they use to describe that, and I really don't want to see Bella Vista described with those terms. Last time they did an EPA air study on Centrilia, Pennsylvania, the EPA said the air was safe, which is actually better than what we have right now by the stump dump, and I certainly don't want to have that level of very quiet. I don't want anyone calling Bella Vista a wasteland or anything of that nature. Right now, the last time I saw the check of the PBM for the air quality monitors, it says 548, which is actually worse than New Delhi, India, which is actually considered the worst air quality in the world. Right now, they say that if you live a day in New Delhi, India, it's like smoking a pack of cigarettes every single day. Obviously, when we've almost doubled that, I don't want to know what that actually relates to. It's very, very bad. It makes me very saddened that my 14-year-old son breathes air every single day. Right now, there are 250 people affected by this immediately within a half a mile of the stump dump fire. And I, Councilman Flynn, Linda, what proposals have you guys made to help these people? Has there been any N95 mask purchase for these people? Has there been any type of relocation efforts made? I know as a city, we cannot have the funds to resolve this issue, but what are we doing to help people that are affected by this every single day, that are breathing this air in? Why are we not buying masks for these people? What are we doing to help these people? Not wait for these studies, but help them now, today, tomorrow, four months ago. These people need help, and they cannot wait for government studies. They need help right now, today, tomorrow. That's all.
You're smart, bro. Thank you.
Kelly Williams.
Hello. My name is Kelly Williams, and I'm a mountain biker. I have an adult daughter that also lives in Bella Vista that suffers from the addiction of mountain biking. I'm here today representing the mountain bike community, some of which are here.
You guys raise your hands.
Many of us are not here. Tonight, we're here only to say thank you to all of you, the city of Bella, and the city of Bella Vista. We want to say thank you for all the beautiful lakes, golf courses, and now the trails. The terrain in Bella Vista makes the most fantastic trails. These trails are allowing hikers, runners, and bikers into beautiful areas that have been previously inaccessible. Families are taking hikes. There was an organized run bike event this month that after only three years had hundreds of participants. The tent sites and blowing springs are full on weekends weather permitting, full of trail runners and mountain bikers. Again, we're only here to tell you how much we appreciate all that you do and say thank you for all the beautiful trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Trina?
Trina, I'm only living in one little circle that's within a mile out, but I also have a licensed preschool in home. I service 16 kids every day. That means if they're not allowed, don't go outside, as of when the survey came out and said that. They can't go out and run, it's exhausting. So I may be just a little person, but I do service 286 kids for the last 13 years, and they all have rights. They all have the right to go outside and play. You can't keep three-year-olds cooped up in a classroom and expect them to be just fine and dandy. It affects them, it affects every one of them. And then when I have kids, I have, let me know this, is it because of this? I don't know. Have I ever had it before? No, I have not. Does the parents know? They don't know. Am I losing clients? Yes. And I've been here 15 years. I love the community. I've had my in-home license preschool for 13 years of it. But if it's your grandkids, and they can't run outside, will I relocate? I've been in contact with DHS, they'll do emergency relocation if I can find a place to do it, because everyone deserves to go out. I'd like to go. It's a beautiful day, and they couldn't do it. So I urge you, if it's not for me, do it for the kids, because they all deserve it.
Thank you.
I live in Five McNuneys. I just got a question. Who do you work for? Who do you work for? You work for the city. You work for the POA members. You work for the residents that live in this town. You've been voted in, you can and you will be voted out. I may not know much about legal mumble jumbo, but I don't have to know to know what's right and what's wrong. I don't even live near the stump dump, but I can smell it at my house, just right down the road from this place right here. These people talk about riding trails and how much friend they're having. How much friend are they having breathing this toxic smoke? Or drinking our polluted water that we can't even drink? What's the deal with you people? Do y'all not know right from wrong? Do y'all not care? Me and my husband have lived here for 13 years. We started out in old Bella Vista for 10 years, then we thought, oh, we want to live up here because it's so pretty, and we've got privacy and protection and all this, and you have slapped it in our face. I'm ashamed to live here now. How dare you sit there when your homes are probably not even being affected by this, by any of this? The stump dump, the water, probably the water because we all get water, the trails? You don't give a crap where them trails are going. You don't care if they're going in common property that plainly states in our bylaws is to be used by common, by the property owners. You assume a lot of stats. You know what assume means? An ass out of you and me. And you're making an ass of yourself, and you're making an ass of me for even wanting to live in this town. We are the property owners, and we are the citizens of Bella Vista, and we're not going to fit up with this. And we're not going to go away quietly. And I hope you can go to bed with the kids that are getting sick, and the animals that are getting sick, and everything else on your conscience, and our privacy that's being taken away. We bought our home here and we stole the property, but stay just that, common property. Well, guess that was a lie along with a few other things. You are unindoubtable the force used for a city council, I represent.
Thank you. Deborah Evans.
Deborah Evans, Brittany Lane. I'm within a half a mile of the stump dump. This is what I sound like most days. Three years ago, I moved to Paradise, Bella Vista, Arkansas. I sold my home in California and was thrilled to purchase a home on Brittany Lane. I loved living here for many reasons, the peace and quiet, the woods, the clean air, and the friendly people. Life was better than I ever expected. Life in Paradise changed dramatically five months ago. After five months of dealing with daily smoke and pungent smells from the stump dump slash Trafalgar fire, my home in Paradise is now bombarded with unhealthy air, ashes from the ongoing fire, and now I've got asthma. I'm on a daily steroid inhaler, never had that in my life. I've gotten towels in all the windows and all the doors, and have a HEPA filter and a living air filter operating in my home 24/7 just to maintain some quality of fresh air. As I am retired, my home is a big financial investment in my future. Sadly, even if I wanted to move now, I couldn't sell my home for what it's worth because of the toxic fumes outdoors, and no resolution to this problem evident at this time. People are sick. Children and the elderly are especially at risk from this ongoing fire. Homes are being devalued. As a city, we are not going to attract tourism or new growth with this issue continuing to affect our way of life. We have made local news, and new sources out of our area have covered this story. This affects all of Bella Vista, not just the east side. People locally and in other states are watching how our community leaders handle this situation. How concerned are our leaders about the quality of our air and the overall effect of the ongoing pollutants that are having on our citizens and our animals? The first line of defense in any fire is to remove the residents and animals from harm's way, yet we haven't even put the fire out to stop the pollution. A lawsuit had to occur to even get this problem addressed. We all deserve to breathe fresh air, no matter which part of Bella Vista would reside in. Regardless of the fact that this property is now owned by Brown Tree Service, it is a fire that is threatening the health of the people living in Bella Vista and for miles down the road. If I was doing something on my property that I own that was causing the air quality to be at risk and unhealthy, I find it hard to believe that the city would in all good consciousness allow this to continue. Where are the experts in this area type of fire? What are we waiting for? I find it hard to believe that this is allowed to continue because of money. Where is the governor in all of this? Where is the state of Arkansas in helping us clean this up? As a community, we deserve better than this. I think the city of Flint, Michigan would probably agree with us. This is about keeping our citizens safe and out of harm's way regardless of dealing with water or fire or anything that threatens the quality of life we move here to enjoy. I'm ready to live in paradise again without moving. I'm strongly urging our city council and our local and state representatives to get the fire put out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I just want to say again, thank you to Frank for all your service to the city. I know that there is a big issue with the stump dump, sure we can all agree. I know, Mayor, you live over there, and you have to deal with that as well. One of the biggest things I've noticed, and it's one of the things I ran on for city council, was community involvement. You get a lot more information when you speak to someone face-to-face. I've spoken to councilmembers and the mayor, I've spoken to the chief, and you learn a lot more through that than you do through Facebook or through looking stuff up online. Those are good resources, but the face-to-face is really a good thing. So I've talked to incoming councilmembers and I've also talked to the mayor before about organizing an event for councilmembers and the mayor to show up to and get that face-to-face interaction. I'll be emailing each of you a proposal to it, not any specific dates, but if I could get an email or a response back from you guys, and you guys all have that information, and we get something put together there, because I think that's one of the main reasons people are even showing up to this meeting, is just to get a response, and we can't get that during public input, but if we can get something together, we can, that would be a good thing for the city for any issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I would like to make a motion to this Bella Vista City Council for tonight to make an appropriation of $75,000 for three independent engineering firms knowledgeable in subterranean fires to assess the stump dump fire and propose remediation plans, including estimated cost projections by January 15th, 2019. May I make such a motion to this council?
You could certainly suggest it, and we'll take it.
I asked you today how I was to petition, and I was not given information, and I also sent an email asking how I was to petition. So since I do not know the procedures, and surely our attorney does, what the procedures are, I am asking, if I am not allowed to make that motion, will one of you council members make the motion? I'm happy to give you my phone, it's exactly on here.
Ma'am, it doesn't work that way. You're free to make your comment, and the council will take action.
I would like to make that motion.
If you're not a member of the council, you don't have standing to make a motion.
Would my council...
She's probably more qualified than you are.
One of our council members make this motion, then, if I am not allowed to do so. I think there's one other one who's going to actually be sworn in later. This doesn't make sense to me. I specifically asked, I said in my email and to you, I don't know how to do this, and you're probably not the person to ask. I don't know how to make a petition. I'm sorry, I'm ignorant of this. I was not given information exactly how to do it, so I'm coming with a proposal. I was given to understand that somewhere between $9,000 and $20,000, we'll get an engineering firm to study this. I'm proposing $75,000 for three separate firms. That's my motion. Please understand.
Here's the time to do the right thing. Make a motion. Support us, listen to our voices. You never listen.
What I suggest is you wait until I give you the update, because there has been great work done already by experts.
And you will recall, I specifically discussed with you at the last council meeting, and was told in so many words that it really wasn't problematic. Your communications person said she would not call a meeting, so we residents had to call a meeting December 1st. I'm just kind of reminding you, and I'm making a motion, because apparently, y'all can't make a motion and appropriate funds. Funds were appropriated by the POA of $150,000 to take care of the other four dumps that are not burning. I had to be told that by the EPA and ADEQ, that that money is for the ones that are not burning.
Come on, make a motion. What a geriatric award in here, man.
Travis Green.
My name is Travis, it's my wife, Brittany. We ride bikes, we live in Bella Vista. We've lived in northwest Arkansas for most of our lives, and have been able to watch and participate in the awesome transformation in our little corner into the awesome mountain biking community and mecca that it is today. By taking unused and often uncared-for property and building trails, our landscape is a boon of playground which encourages outdoor play and growth for everyone. Trails encourage healthy activity and exploration, and we're forever thankful for the network of trails we have in our backyard, creating mindfulness of our environment and connecting those with nature. What started as a passion for riding has grown into a passion to share these experiences with others. This passion has grown into a career-building trail based here in Bella Vista, with countless ways to make the world a little bit better with each period of time. The spaces that we build in are bits of land that have been forgotten. We leave the land better and remove the trash and tires we find, creating spaces which are no longer forgotten but enjoyed by countless families. We just want to thank you all for your time and the amazing network of trails that we have calling.
And John, you'll be the last one.
What? Can you make a motion to extend the meeting?
No, they're not good at doing motions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is John Donald, I live at 40, Temleco. Tonight, I'd like to address to councilmember Frank Anderson, my thanks and the thanks of my family for the 12 years of service that you've committed to the city of Bella Vista, plus all the time you've committed to this POA. And thank you very much, and I hope you enjoy what every course your life takes you on in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wait. Wait. For heaven's sakes, wait.
Why, dude, we've been waiting four months. Waiting four months for you to get off your asses.
Wait.
Listen to this.
Wait. Let him say something. For heaven's sakes.
You've said enough.
Let's be civil to one another.
Hold on.
Be civil to one another and show respect.
Come on.
Okay, council, at this point, we've hit the 30 minutes. However, we do have the ability to extend it if I have a motion to extend.
Second.
For a period of time to extend it, it looks like for another 30 minutes.
Well, I want to speak. I think I'm the last one on there. I have something to say.
No, you're not the last one. You're third to the end. You will get your chances.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Very, very welcome.
There's a motion second. There's a motion second to extend this for an additional 30 minutes. Who will roll call first? Councilmember...
This is why we're not going to do it here.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Carey.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on with Alyssa now.
Thank you.
Alyssa Olson.
All right. You've done good.
Alyssa Olson. My name is Alyssa Olson. I'm a Bella Vista property owner and resident in Maryland Lane within the Harrington subdivision and a half mile of the stump dump Trafalgar fire by the Royal College. I'm here to express my concerns about the health and well-being of the individuals and the wildlife that live within the proximity of this stump dump here on the east side. I have asthma and allergies. That's not your problem. That's my problem. But it is exacerbated by the smoke. It continually surges. It ebbs and flows. And every day before I go outside to take my dogs out to go to the bathroom, I have to check to see if I have to wear one of these first, log mask or a medical N95 mask. And still, even wearing those, on some days, I'm still having asthma attack and I'll end up throwing up in the yard or whatever. I have been to the doctor. I had my asthma and allergies under control for quite a while until the stump dump occurred, the fire. And now I'm back to actually more frequently and accordingly steroid shots. Others have talked about steroid inhalers. That is my only issue. I know there are others that are worse. There's a woman that lives on the opposite side of the stump dump than me. I know that has a trait. I don't know how she does it, but on the days when I'm having a good day, the wind is blowing in her direction. I don't know how she lives. I don't know how she survives her day. I'm here to ask for your help. I seek clean air. I seek to enjoy my own piece of beautiful Bella Vista in my own yard that I do not have right now because I cannot go outside and enjoy it. I can barely take my dogs out to pee and get back inside most days. Some days are fine. I seek clean air and I seek resolution to this fire. Please, for whatever you can do, I urge you to take action and not delay any further. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Steve McKee.
is Steve McKee. Live over in the Tyree subdivision. I want to thank you all for your service and also thank the community for raising their voices. And if the Walton Family Foundation is listening, I want to thank them for their donations to fund the Bella Vista POA Common Property Trail Plan. Unfortunately, there are times when a one- or two-time walk-away donation does not always make the plan possible. It's like agreeing to fund your child's college education for four years, but it turns out they want to be an engineer, which is a five-year program. So do you abandon your child, or do you do the right thing? All the citizens of Bella Vista are very concerned about a problem known as the stump dump fire or the Trafalgar Road fire. It's been burning for more than four months. On 12/12/18, the Arkansas Department of Health issued an unhealthy report, and there's obviously many anecdotes of the air that we're breathing. Basically, it said that within a half-mile radius of the 8,000 block of Trafalgar Road, you should avoid prolonged or heavy exertion outdoors. What this obviously means is outdoor activities should be curtailed, and as such, the trail system should be closed until the fire is put out. This radius includes the back 40 loop, some at school, what the Chuck, FlowRide, and various trailheads. But the situation may be akin to what happened out at Scottsdale when a few of the greens froze. It may be more simpler and easily more manageable to just close the whole thing due to the erratic nature of the fire, the wind currents, and the deep concern from all the citizens. We want to avoid any accusations of arbitrariness or of ignoring known hazards. Basically, we want a solution. The city and the POA have the authority to close the trails until the fire is put out. Do they have the will? We hope that you do. In the meantime, the city, EPA, ADEQ, and others are actively trying to arrive at a solution. The land, however, is owned by a corporation, and apparently they have the authority and no doubt the will, but not the resources to deal adequately and immediately to extinguish the fire. With about $5 billion in assets, the Walton Family Foundation does have the resources to extinguish the fire and remediate the site. Do they have the will? We hope that they do, and we hope they will do what is necessary to help solve and end this horrible situation. This would clearly prove to all that they are concerned citizens and are willing to continue the trail plan as partners with the citizens of Bella Vista and members of the Bella Vista Property Owners Association. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Bostic?
Hi. This is Sandy Bostic, 37 Stone Newton Drive. My issue is with the urban forestry and landscape ordinance that's on the agenda for tonight, specifically the portion that could possibly make homeowners responsible for trees that could possibly fall on the trails, and they may have to pay for them. Here, you've got people who are not happy that they have lost their privacy, and now you're going to come along and slap them in the face with possibly having to pay to remove a tree? And I don't really understand because we've been told that we can't charge the public for using our trails because if we do, we'll be liable for their injuries. Yet, you turn around and tell a homeowner that they may have to remove a tree because it may fall on someone? It just doesn't make any sense to me. We own three properties. We don't own any that are on the trails nor scheduled to be on the trails. I feel really bad for the people who have lost their privacy and now could possibly be facing hundreds of dollars to have trees removed. We had a neighbor whose tree fell on one of our trees, and because of the steepness of our lot, it was $1,800 to remove these two trees. I just don't want to see any of our citizens be subject to that. So if this ordinance includes that, I am voicing my opinion that I have a problem with that. The other thing I'd like to know, and I haven't been able to find anybody who can tell me, is if there were any environmental impact studies done before the trails were built. It just seems like they're plowing through all the land, and my fear is that the ground's going to erode. My fear is the wildlife is going to be removed. And once homeowners take down trees that they need to for their homes, we're not going to have anything left but mudslides. And if you all live in Bella Vista, you need to remember what the bylaws say about the trees. It specifically says, "The preservation of trees on common property is critical to maintain the aesthetics and natural beauty of Bella Vista and to protect property values for all parties. Trees are vital to maintaining the environment by stabilizing soil, minimizing water runoff, protecting native flora in the shaded undershoring, and supporting wildlife. Standing dead trees and downed trees are of particular value to wildlife and will generally be left in place due to their economical value, ecological value, and because of the unavailable additional disturbance caused by their removal." So, like I said, I hope as you're making these laws, you're remembering what our bylaws specifically say.
Thank you.
Alyssa Blayback, 94th Berry Lane. I'd like to thank John and Lynda for taking my emails earlier this week, and I'd like to thank the city council for extending the time so everybody can be heard. I have some questions for the city council, namely, why is the city placing responsibility for extinguishing the fire on the property owner? If my house catches on fire, is it my job to extinguish it? What about Alan's? Are you going to make the baggers put out the fire? If cost is the issue because the city can't afford it, how can we expect a single company to afford it? And if we can't afford it, I urge you to vote no on the trails tunnel builders before you tonight. It's needs versus want. I want bike trails. Me and my neighbors need clean air. It's clean. It's needs versus want, and if there's $3.2 million for a trail tunnel, certainly there is money to put out the fire. If the city is requiring the property owner to take action, where is he? How will you compel this property owner to act? Why is the water quality of Lake Anne being prioritized over the health of residents who have to breathe the air every day? Why have we not declared a state of emergency to bring up funds? Surely, if it can be declared for snow removal, it can happen for a fire that's been burning for five months. Finally, I would like to make the city aware of a product called Peak Fire Act, which was created by Envirix Solutions out of Dallas, Texas. I've spoken with the general counsel of this company about their product, and he said it is ideal for these types of fires. We could put enough in the back of a pickup truck and pay less than $50,000 for it and put the fire out in a week.
Wow.
It is an inexpensive, effective, and natural product. It breaks down to a nitrogen fertilizer. I urge the city to look into this product and put this fire out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen?
It's good to be back. I see that the city has three different issues going on here. We've got a communications problem, and we've got a health safety problem, and then we've got a fire problem. And they can all be tackled simultaneously, but the priority will always go to the public safety, the health of the people, right? Going back to incident command days, health safety of the responders first. So the fire department shows up, sizes up the scene, and make sure that however they decide to attack that fire, that they do it in a way that won't put any of those responders at risk. Once they figure that out, they determine, are there any public or is there anybody that needs to be rescued? And then they go ahead and conduct the rescue. That's where we're at right now. ADH has said that there are people in a .5-mile radius living in a hazardous zone due to the air quality. Nobody's disagreeing with that, and heads that are a lot smarter than mine are, you know, making that call. They would not have put that bulletin out there. I just want to remind the council that that was based on four air quality monitors in a very short radius. And there's rumor that out of those four monitors, two of them were inoperative part of the time. If those monitors had been increased and expanded out, that radius may well have been a mile, two miles, three miles. We don't know. The bottom line is, we have people in harm's way. And, you know something, there are things that the city could do right now. Provide N95 mask station at the fire stations. Make them available to the public. Coordinate with non-governmental organizations or faith-based organizations and find shelters. Let the residents decide whether or not they're going to go there when the air quality gets bad, but at least provide that opportunity. Jason, I will tell you this. There are numerous cases, you go back and look, of where a city has been sued for their response. Look, no one, who cares who started it right now? We know that that's going to, that's going to, you know, come out at some point in time. Or maybe not. But what I will tell you is, subject to FOIA is all of your actions, and those will be judged. And here's the thing, if you didn't follow your own procedures, then there's going to be a problem. The next thing is, is that, you know, if you didn't take any, do anything to provide any kind of mediation to the immediate health risk that's out there right now, the city's liable for that. And you know what? That's going to affect whether or not there's any funds for your bike trails. Okay? So, in good conscience, and I'll go back to this, you all need to be considering $3.2 million for bike trails or, you know, hold that so that you can mitigate the potential actions you need to take. But focus now on the life safety issues that are facing our citizens now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa.
My name is Stacy Valis. I live on Web Lane in the Fire subdivision. In August of 2017, my husband and I purchased what we thought was going to be our future retirement home. We invested everything down to a complete remodel. On March 2018, when we moved in, July 29, 2018, our life changed, as well as everyone in this room. We live 932 feet from the fire. We are in the ravine where we see it coming towards us. First couple of months, I sat back thinking, somebody's going to take care of this. And they didn't. And that's why I have started to try to do something about it. Generally, I'm a healthy person. Have a few allergies from just, you know, regular environmental allergies. Recently, I've been experiencing symptoms, nausea, skin and eye irritation, respiratory problems, anemia, neurological confusion, burning skin, skin sensitization, and asthma. All of these symptoms are symptoms consistent with the toxins that ADEQ, EPA reported were found, but were found to be below levels. You can't tell me that when you put all those together, it is not affecting our health. Because of this, I was the first person to purchase two of the Purple Air sensors and placed one on Web Lane and one on Southern Lane. Because of those sensors, we're able to know whether we need to shelter in place, leave our homes, whatever needs to be done. This is not right, that citizens had to purchase their own air sensors to know whether it was safe. I have left my house the last two nights because of the air sensor qualities. We have it coming into our house. We are, on Saturday and Sunday, we were second in the world, below China. below China, for our air quality. For a time on Saturday, we surpassed China. So we were number one in the world for air quality. This is supposed to be one of the best places to live in Arkansas. I just want you to know that it's not right, it's not acceptable, and it cannot continue. Every night, I live in fear. I thank God that I don't have children at home. My husband and I try to watch the wind directions to know if we need to turn off our heat. Even doing this, we see the smoke and the stench sitting in the ravine behind our house just east of us. We watch it move with the wind, almost as if it's coming for us. Then after dark, we wait anxiously to see if it's going to infiltrate our home. Among other things, Ragout Trail is 300 feet from my back door. This is at 5:00 PM yesterday. You can't tell me that that trail is safe for people to be on if I can't be in my own home. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kelly Strain. I live at Four, Mary Anne Lane in Bella Vista. Probably two flood oil fields behind us. I call it a toxic dump site. You might call it a stump dump. But why not call it what it is? It's a toxic dump site. I didn't need to wait for EPA to come and give us some results or, hey, this is what you're breathing. We already knew as a community, it wasn't a fire. It might have started off smelling like firewood, but soon after that, it smelled toxic. You could smell it. And once we started reaching out to our community and talking to other members here that are affected by this thing, we realized something's wrong here. And that's when we came to your city council meeting last... Whenever that was, I don't remember the date. And tried to, you know, bring some attention and some awareness to this. I've been on the phone, like many members in this meeting, like many members that aren't even here that are part of this community, to reach out to everybody we can possibly think of to find a solution to the problem. We already know what the problem is now. And the more... I just moved here, and I'm bummed that I moved here. I really am. What a shame. What a debacle. What a disaster. And to know that you, as the mayor of this city and anyone else on this member board, you mean, don't stand up for your community? You oughta be ashamed of yourself. Frank, what a time to stand up and make a mark. You mean, you've made a mark, it sounds like. That's what I heard. Time to make a mark. You can leave your name with goodness here. You mean, do something for your fellow brothers and sisters here. Last thing I want to say is... Okay, a lot of people aren't on social media, don't have that option. You mean, and a lot of the community here are elders. So I don't know. I propose that I will give you $1,000 out of my retirement fund so you could put a flyer in the United States Post Office so every resident of our community that doesn't know about this, because a lot of people don't know about this, has the understanding of where their health is and what the issues are here. So if you could get that done, you tell me what I can do to help you, put those in the mail. I will do everything I possibly can to make that happen. If you can't take $1,000 or whatever it's gonna cost for an attention flyer or warning, you may be in danger because our fire department don't do shit. You mean, and you guys don't do a damn thing. Yeah, I'm pissed off. If you live behind it, you would be too. I breathe it every day. I'm sick of tar and otter. What? Calm down? Okay, I'll calm down. I'm sorry, man, I'm passionate about it. It's affecting every one of us. You heard it. You keep talking about some bike truck, bro. I'm sorry, man. I hear ya. Love biking, surfing. I love the outdoors. But good God, man, do something right. Stand up, make a difference in your community. The difference you've made so far. What was the quote that he said when you became mayor? You said, "I'm gonna leave with integrity. I'm gonna leave with confidence and common sense." Where's your common sense? Are you kidding me? You have no integrity, not with me. I don't know, maybe they have confidence and believe in your integrity. I know. Oh, I know you probably just saw this way, but here's some information.
Thank you. Okay, sir, thank you. Lastly, Jill St. Larry.
Jill St. Larry, 37, American Drive. Our family owns a home within a half-mile radius of unhealthy air. This isn't my thing. I usually stay behind the scenes, so bear with me. Tonight, I want all of us in this room to think about something that seems to be missing in this equation. I want all of us to stop and think about all those living in this zone. Some families have weather stripping inside their windows, inside their house, to try to keep smoke, fumes, particulates and smell from permeating their homes. Last Saturday night, what were you all doing? I don't have this written down, but I was on the phone with the chief medical officer of the state of Arkansas, asking him what I should tell the people that were in their homes that they didn't know what to do. I know many families were desperate for direction. The Purple Air sensors that homeowners have installed at their own cost were in the maroon zone. You could translate this to being off the charts in the most simplest terms. I won't repeat about being number one in the country or the world. But to have the worst air quality on the map is saying something. And families were trying to understand, was it safer to go or safer to stay? What would you do? Expose your families? Was their home on fire? Which in some instances, when you see it go to maroon, that's what that means. You all didn't know that there was... There's no warning to this, okay? You have no understanding how long it's going to spike, how long it's gonna stay in the unhealthy zone. And you have no idea what is burning. A lot of unknowns. A lot of leaps of faith that these families are taking. Faith in our leaders, faith in our community and each other. If it's real bad like this past weekend, your skin may be burning after exposure. Your throat may hurt and feel collated with who knows what. Your pets may be getting sores, and your lungs are just full-on unhappy. Your kids aren't playing outside. You stay up late worrying about the health of your family and if your home has any value. If it were your family, your home, your kids, your pets, what would you want to happen? If you got the call, the family member was in harm's way, would you answer your phone? Would you tell them to talk to your secretary or your communications director? Would you tell them to phone a friend instead? I don't think so. The factor missing in everyone's equation is the human factor. So I would ask all of us to think about human decency and what that means in our actions. I would ask that instead of waiting, watching, and monitoring the fire, that focus changes to the people. The people that pay your salary, the people that you represent, asking you, begging you to hear them and to help them. We can replace homes. We can dump our stump someplace else. And when and if there is a plan, quote-unquote, "to put out the fire", please ensure that people are evacuated first. I'm not finished yet, sorry. Close. That's page two. And then you wanna rip it up. The moms, the dads, the four-year-olds, my 13-year-old, the grandmas and grandpas can't be replaced. Okay? And I'm asking like the famous line in Hamilton, "A seat in the room when it happens." We need the human factor at the table. So when you and the ADQ and the EPA and even maybe Ashley Woodlow of the ADH are in a room where it happens, I'm asking you to reserve a seat at the table to consider all of us in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jill. And my thanks to everyone for attending and for also speaking out. I know at times it's not easy to approach here, and I appreciate it very much, especially the youngsters. Okay, we're gonna continue on now with the agenda, and then right at the end, I'll give you the update. There were some agendas that were available. I think there still might be one here if you wish to grab one. We're moving now to the approval of minutes for November 26, 2018, city council meeting. Any changes? The head is in motion. Seeing none, I take a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call board. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Carrie.
The next is the monthly financial report for October. These were sent out in your package, and I believe that there were some available. They appear to be gone. Are there any questions at all?
No.
Seeing none, we'll move to the next, which is a motion to suspend the rules of read all proposed ordinances of resolutions by the agenda or on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. The first resolution is under rule business, and it's appointing Steve Burke as councilmember of the city of Bella Vista to fill the vacancy in Ward Street, position two, for the remainder of the unexpired term ending December 31, 2018. We had a council member resign back in the summertime, and the council decided that since the elections were so close that we would not appoint someone immediately, and we would table and wait to see who actually won the election. As luck would have it, we ended up having a runoff. And now Mr. Burke has been declared as the winner. And we will be swearing him in at the end of the meeting as well into this position. It may seem a little trite for only two weeks, but the law states that if you have gone through this procedure, then you must fulfill it in order to put someone in the seat. And Mr. Burke will still go down to the courthouse on January 1st and be sworn in. So may I have a motion to...
Motion to amend...
To amend the...
To amend the...
So moved.
Second.
All right. On the motion to amend, councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie.
Okay, now I'd like a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Again. Councilmember Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Carrie.
Thank you. The next piece of old business is an ordinance amending the Bella Vista Code of Ordinances to enact the urban forestry and landscape ordinance and for other purposes. This is the second reading. Comments?
No, I'd just like to tell Ms. Wozniak we'll follow up with her comments about required tree removal, possibly, you know, on neighbor's property. I'm really not aware of that, but we'll look into it and see what's up with it, okay?
Fair enough, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. What happens with an ordinance is we read it three times, which is usually every successive month unless we feel that there is urgency, and then we can move it up faster. I think we will let this one go for another month so that there can be other citizen input if needed. So now we move to new business. The first is accepting and confirming the dedication of public right-of-way by Cooper Communities, Inc. near the area of Highlands Crossing. Highlands Crossing is a very short road that is up沿 Plaza. I'm not sure if everybody is familiar with it. It is a private road. And the residents approached us to determine if we would be willing to take on the maintenance and responsibility for the road. The road superintendent has reported that the road is in excellent shape. And so we began the tasks of getting all the owners on the abutting sides to grant easements. We received the final paperwork, which was from Cooper Communities, and we're now in a position to actually accept and confirm and bring this in as a street within the city. Is there any comments at all? Okay. Staff is requesting that we move to third and final reading, which moves it up so we don't have to wait for another two months so that in the event that there is a snowstorm, the city can actually plow it, salt and sand it so that the residents are getting the same level of road treatment as everyone else in the city. So I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final reading.
So moved.
Second. All right. Roll call board. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Kerry.
Okay. Accepting and confirming the dedication of public right-of-way by Cooper Communities, Inc., near the area of Highlands Crossing, this is the third and final reading. Any further discussion? I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All right. Councilmember Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Kerry.
Thank you. The next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vanguard Cleaning Systems of the Ozarks for janitorial cleaning services for city facilities, this repeat for the upcoming year. The pricing is included in your packet. Are there any questions at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Kerry.
Thank you. The next resolution authorizing budgetary funding transfers between departments in the 2018 annual city budget. This is a piece of housekeeping that we do at the end of every year as we approach the end and we're going to end up finalizing the books. There are times when we may have to move monies from one department to the other because the law states that we cannot just arbitrarily take money from one department and move it to the other without having council approval. We haven't had to use this the past couple of years because the budgets have been fine. However, nevertheless, so we don't delay the closing of the books, we always bring this to council at this time of the year. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Kerry.
Okay. The next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Crossland Heavy Contractors in the amount of $3,263,961.90 for construction related to Phase 2 of the Bella Vista Trail system.
Let's table that.
Just a second please.
Table it.
Let's wait. This is not city money. This is money that has been granted to the city by the Walton Family Foundation. There are no taxpayer dollars being used to build the trail.
Have you asked them if you can use it to help us?
This is the same that happened when we built the back 40.
Yeah, legally.
Okay? Have you asked them? Have you approached them and asked them?
This is a grant that is coming for the Walton Family Foundation.
That's not an answer.
What you're asking me is a P O A question that I cannot answer.
Have you, as our mayor, approached them and said, "Can we use this money to help my four-year-old son who is coughing every night"? Have you, as my mayor, asked them that, sir?
Okay. So that's the resolution as read?
Yes, that's... No. Yeah, I got my answer.
Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
Jesus, just like that you can take care of a $3.2 million job, but you can't go put out a fire in our backyard? Are you kidding me?
No. You have to have a motion and say... Oh, sir, yes.
What a joke. You guys are getting this? Hopefully the media's hearing this?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Second.
Y'all gotta get run out of town, man.
Any discussion?
Linda?
All right.
Discussion? Anything?
No. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Wozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Kerry. You guys are corrupt.
Okay. The last piece of business is swearing in of a new council member. Mr. Burke, would you step forward, please?
Maybe this is our new mayor, maybe he can make a change here.
Let's hear it, Stephen.
He's part of the shit show.
I, Stephen Burke?
I, Stephen Burke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties.
Councilmember Ward 3, Position 2?
Councilmember Ward 3, Position 2?
City of Bella Vista, Arkansas?
City of Bella Vista, Arkansas.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
With integrity.
Congratulations.
And common sense.
There's some paperwork that we've got to complete after this. Okay, meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Tuesday, January 22, 5:30, in the Bella Vista District Court Building. The next regular meeting of the city council will be funding January 28 at 6:30 in the Bella Vista Court Building. The planning commission work session will be Thursday, January 3 at 4:30 PM in the Bella Vista District Court Building. Planning commission's regular meeting will be January 14 at 6:30 in the Bella Vista Court Building. And finally, the board of zoning adjustment will be December 18 in the Bella Vista District Court Building. And before I give you the update, Frank, I would ask everyone, thank you for 12 solid years, eight as mayor and four sitting on here as council. Great service to the community. Thank you very, very much.
Good job, folks.
Okay, my thanks to all residents for suggestions and engagement as we worked through the Trafalgar Road Fire. Many of you have given us suggestions on how we just might possibly put this fire out and deal with it. I want you to know that every single one of them was sent to the EPA for their consideration. I would like everyone to know, especially the residents who are impacted very deeply by this fire situation, to understand that just because the city's firefighters are not out at the stump dump with a water hose, doesn't mean the city is not doing our part to help resolve this situation as quickly as possible or that the city is not concerned about your health and well-being.
Have you reached out to the elders in our community?
Kelly, please.
Just asking.
I would also like to be sure that the residents understand that the city is not in charge of this situation.
Nobody is.
This is a very delicate environmental situation that is beyond our means. We do not have the resources or the expertise with the fire out and we're relying on state and federal agencies who are in existence for that exact purpose. When the plan is put in place, we do not have the money to pay the millions it is likely to cost. So I want all of you to have an accurate expectation from your city government. The fire chief met on Friday with representatives from A D E Q, that's Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, and the Arkansas Health Department, the EPA and their experts to evaluate the fire and make a recommendation on its remediation. The meeting was arranged by A D E Q. The property owner was not present. Per the EPA, several recommendations will be presented and the best method for putting the fire out will be decided on and presented to the property owner. The A D E confirmed again at the meeting that the property owner has primary responsibility for fixing the situation. We received a copy of the report this afternoon, which included three options for extinguishing the fire. First, the insertion of an inert gas underground. Second, a foam or chemical treatment. And third, the excavation of the material, which would then be doused by water. Each has its pros and cons and the report can be found on the city's website for you to read. While they did line out these options, there has yet to be a decision made on a plan.
Of course.
Congressman Womack visited the site this afternoon with me to see firsthand what has happened and I am scheduled to be on another round with state and federal legislators this Friday following the release of the third round of air quality testing. The purpose of these calls is to keep pushing for action and to find a funding solution to solve the problem. This is the second. The people who attended the first were Senator Bozeman, Congressman Womack, the director of A D E Q and the EPA senior management and fire chief and myself attended on the phone. We will be doing the same thing this coming Friday and we have also asked the governor to attend.
On the phone? Might you clarify that, on the phone or in physical face-to-face?
Well, it would be on the phone because you've got people from Little Rock, Washington, DC and here.
Wouldn't want them to breathe anything bad.
It was reaffirmed at the meeting on Friday that it is not feasible for the city's fire department to put water on the fire until proper retention and environmental protection methods are put in place. The fire chief also addressed questions concerning the containment of the fire and told the representatives from these agencies that the fire is contained underground at this time and if there is a threat of the fire spreading, fire personnel will take action. The fire department and the Arkansas Forestry Department are still in talks regarding establishing a fire break perimeter around the edges of the fire. I'm aware that there has been rampant misinformation circulating on social media. For instance, the fire was not burning prior to July of this year. Also, there has not been additional debris brought in and burned, but rather the same underground fire continues to burn and smoke. I would encourage residents not to believe everything they hear and see and be sure to go to the source for correct information.
Would that be you?
The city will continue providing updates we get directly from state and federal level on the city's website as we receive them and I urge you to check the website for the most up-to-date information. As we saw over the past weekend, the weather has a great effect on the level of smoke and odor in the air. This is like a leak, a living, breathing thing that responds to the environment and I think we heard that this evening. The cool moist air keeps the smoke hanging low and the smell high. This is why in the morning hours the valley looks full of smoking fog and by afternoon little smoke can be seen. Rainy days soak the ground and then the water takes 24 hours or so to infiltrate the fire, making it burn less efficiently and smoke more. I implore all of us to contact the Arkansas Health Department with health concerns as that is the agency that deals with public health issues and to adhere to the recommendations that the experts provide.
So have they reached out to the local community?
Kelly?
We have reached out to them. Just asking.
I know residents have been using their own systems to monitor the air quality. Since we at the city are not air quality experts, we sought some information this afternoon from the Arkansas Department of Health regarding these monitors.
That was timely.
This data is hugely impacted by other environmental factors such as humidity and the A D H said that these readings are not typically considered accurate and usually run high. Please bear with me, I'm only telling you what the experts are telling us.
Bring some machines that work instead of bringing foam to them.
Anytime, any article, a particle pass... Kelly, for heaven's sakes, let me read it, please, because the people want to hear.
Oh, okay. My bad.
Yes, it is. Anytime any kind of particle passes through the detector, an algorithm guesses what the particle is. That means each water molecule that passes through was counted as a particulate. The A D A urges us to remind residents that this is not validated quality control data and is not information that they would use to make health calls. However, they did say with certainty that a quality air filtration system is a much better investment. They said an air monitoring system will alert you of conditions and do nothing more than cause anxiety, well, a filtration system will actually be working to filter the air you breathe.
They told me the opposite of that. They said that it does not. Unless you have a specific micro particulate impact, it can...
Amber, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just the messenger telling them...
This is a joke.
...for seconds, okay? This fire is not something that city officials or staff take lightly. We have spent countless hours working towards a solution to this problem in our hands. As it is important you seek out the health department for health concerns, it is equally important...
Good job, Mayor. Keep on staking on.
Thank you for leaving.
Keep on staking on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Over this situation with other issues and concerns you have, the A D Q is overseeing this process. They have rules that need to be followed and the methods to enforce. They are to whom inquiries should be directed. Residents can find contact information for A D E Q and the Health Department on the city's website. Last week, Tom Judson of the P O A and myself met with Amber and Bill Gaver. One of the things that you brought up tonight was how do we get to the people who do not have access to internet? How do we inform them about the fire and what they can do to protect themselves? So here's what we're doing. We are working with the P O A to have inserts put into the water bills. Okay? We know that every resident gets a water bill unless you're online, but we suspect that the older ones probably are not online, therefore if you have an insert in there, they will read it. Okay? We are...
We send lots or just these?
No, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be the whole city. And also, the P O A has a weekly email blast. Is everybody aware of it?
Yes.
Okay, that is a blast of 19,000 addresses. Their hit is 40%, which is remarkably high. So they have agreed to put information on there and a link to our site for those who actually have the internet access. Somebody had mentioned, I think it was Kelly who left, that what about doing an actual fire out to those in the immediate area through the post office? That will be done as well because thanks to the post office technology, you can actually zero it in on where you want to go. Okay, that is going to be done as well. Now, many of you have come up with some great suggestions. In fact, two of the suggestions that I read here that the EPA is actually considering came from you.
Woo-hoo.
So I thank you for that. Okay? I have also been in touch with experts outside of the EPA. I was given a name of a gentleman in California by a resident at the last meeting, at the last community meeting, and I had a very good chat with him. And he too was concerned about using water when the stump dump was not prepared properly when it was opened in 2012. So he said, "You have to be very careful because if you just go in and pour millions of gallons on it, you could create another disaster that you really don't want." So I said, "What are the options?" And he told me, "You could use foam."
Yep.
Foam. The problem is, the foam can be toxic if it's not done correctly and you have to be very, very careful. And if you look at the pros and cons on the webpage for all three, thank you, it talks about that. The other that we talked about was cup trenches. And he's not a big fan of cup trenches either because that still involves pouring water into it.
My solution is organic and breaks down to me...
Please send it to me.
I sent it to the fire chief.
Please send it to me and I will send it to the...
I sent it to John and Linda too, I guess they didn't forward it. But I'll make sure you get it.
Please send it to me so I can send it to the deputy minister of the EPA, who's the gentleman that I'm working with, okay? Okay. The expert in California also talked about excavation and that is the third that they're talking about. And basically what they're saying is you have, everybody's seen the big grappling hooks. You would go in and you would actually pick it up, hot and burning, and you put it into the back of trucks and you transport it to what they call a suppression area, which is an area that is safe to water it down and put it out. Okay? Now, please understand that if the EPA and E D A Q select the extraction method, it's going to get worse than it is now. Because what will happen is it will introduce air into the fire. So the fire will actually pick up and so will the smoke. However, the end is in sight because you're physically removing it from the site and putting it out. Makes sense?
What do people do? What are the people supposed to do?
During the extraction?
Now, today?
Now, to do exactly what you're doing, which is to stay indoors, make sure you have a healthy, excuse me, make sure you have a good filtration system, there's a lady who is using masks, you must do what you need to do to protect your family. And that is what the health department is telling us.
The way she can't afford it.
Not everybody can afford to buy that stuff.
You got it.
So is the health department going to furnish?
You'll have to ask the health department, sir.
Well, we're just asking you if they...
But I'm not the health department. Go to the health department directly. Don't use us as an, as an in-between. They, they would rather hear from you than me.
When I've called them, Mayor, nobody answers. The phone at the health department is like at City Hall.
Okay. There is a young lady that attended the community meeting and we have her email address if you prefer to send her an email. That can be done.
She doesn't respond to emails.
She won't respond. I want her to reply.
Then I, I don't know what else to tell you.
What about, how do you protect this on southern land? We can't afford our air filtration system.
Had the attorney officially sent notice to Brown's tree service as to this thing being their responsibility so that this don't fall back and they say, "Well, we was never notified."
Yes. I just got a copy.
Ever sent them a letter?
Yes.
Unofficial?
It's their responsibility whether they understand that today or not. It's on their property. It's their mess. But let me, let me explain to you the situation, okay, that you've asked. Legally, this is a situation that legally is not that difficult. They're liable. There are all kinds of state environmental laws and other laws that the A D Q is looking at and possibly what we hear today is in fact state attorney general may be getting involved in this very soon. So in terms of the city, what we can do in terms of a hammer over this situation is this big compared to this gigantic thing that they've got.
I wondered if you'd sent him a letter.
If we send them a notice and we, which we have, which we can, we do it in terms of dilapidated or unsafe properties around town and they don't clean it up, of course they don't know how yet, so, and the government's still trying to figure out how to tell them to do it. But if they don't clean that up, then the government can come in and pay two to eight million dollars or whatever it's going to take and clean it up. There's no doubt that the government would have that authority. The problem at this point is the two to eight million dollars. That's the issue. It's not notify them and can you get it done? That's what it's going to come down to because this company is probably not going to have it and the government's going to end up doing it and we don't have it, we hope others do.
We realize that, but I would just curious as if he would ever been...
We, I have, I have had communication with the attorneys for those people and they have been put on notice by me that they are to be complying with our orders.
So they have been...
I have no, I have discussed with their attorney that he's...
They're doing away with all of our regulations, so we don't know what they're going to do They're doing away with all of our regulations, so we don't know what they're going to do because our president and his people are throwing-
I can't speak to the president tonight, I promise.
I do have one question. For example, I have something in my yard that's not a basketball court or a basketball court exactly, that it's not supposed to be in the driveway. So I get a notice, either I-
Well, that's different. That's different because that would be a different one.
But I'll get fined. And then why does that not work at Canham also?
Well, and, and they can, you have to understand, yes, all those things are violation. I have little doubt that they're a violation of, of our city code.
So why wouldn't his liability insurance automatically come in and take care of the basketball?
Uh, you're going to talk to them about that and I would encourage anybody who believes you have a claim against these people, that you need to, you don't always have to come to the government. You can, we're here, we're going to do what we can. You can talk to private attorneys and these people may be subject to suit. I'm not going to say yes absolutely because that would not be proper. They've already been sued and your neighbors are on it. They're on it. Get on it.
Mr. Mayor? In addressing this gentleman's concern, I just got a copy of the letter that was sent from Bailey and Oliver to Mr. Brown regarding what he is not supposed to be doing and how to, to comply with what we're asking and that went out today. So, yes.
I say, I would just curious as to if he'd ever been-
He has been notified.
Because the city was-
They have been up to here with ADEQ and-
The city was about three months behind before-
Mayor?
Jill, folks, we're going to have to end because it's 3:14 in the morning.
I do believe that there is not opportunity with the Arkansas Department of Health as well as maybe the chief medical officer to establish a point person that people can call and ask. There are some issues in the medical community getting doctorial standard facilities to take this seriously and I believe that if they could identify a point person that is willing to go to the phone and answer people's concerns, then that would be worthwhile. So if you could please ask them to try to do that and publish that, I think that would be-